Welcome everyone. I'll call this June 24, 2025 meeting of council to order at 5:00 p.m. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of council, staff, and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being live streamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001 and in accordance with the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, all information attained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone was attending in person, and if there's a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings at a meeting, the meeting may be recessed. So I would ask everyone to rise for the national anthem if they can. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on the ancestral lands of the Haudenosaunee, Mississauga, and Omaa-Winney people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all Indigenous people, including the Métis, Inuit, and other First Nations from across this vast land who also makes this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the True World Wampeam, Dish with One Spoon Treaty, Treaty 27, and the Crawford Purchase. First item up, could we have a motion for the confirmation of the agenda? Council主席
I would recommend that the agenda of the June 24, 2025 meeting of council be confirmed as suggested.
So moved, seconded by Deputy Mayor Towne. All in favor, motion has passed. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof for open session this evening? Council主席
Your worship, I wish to declare on item 11.3, I have a conflict in that my property is involved in that and I've already filed the paperwork.
Thank you. Councilor Ennis.
For item 11.5, potential future lease, and I file the papers with the clerk.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations this evening? Being none, I would entertain a motion for closed session. Would anyone like to make that motion? Councilor Wells.
I move that council move into closed session to consider third-party information supplied in confidence to the municipality, third-party financial contribution MOU pursuant to Section 239 to I of the Municipal Act.
So moved, seconded by Councilor Ennis. All the question, all in favor, motion is carried.
Welcome everyone. We'll reconvene the meeting at this time. We actually started our council meeting at 5:00 PM. And we've been in closed session since that time. We're coming out of closed session to reconvene the open session. And at this time, we do have one item we're bringing out of closed session to be dealt with in open. And the motion will be put on the screens here so everyone can view them. I'll just give a second for everyone to review that. So with that, council, I'd entertain a mover to proceed with this motion. Counselor Proderick?
Thank you, your worship. I would move that the report from the Economic Growth and Community Development Services Department, dated June 24, 2025, read Third Party Financial Contribution Memorandum of Understanding for Species That Risk Habitat Compensation be received, and that council authorize the mayor and the CAO to execute the proposed memorandum of understanding, pending final terms and conditions that are acceptable to staff and township legal council, and that council approve the contribution to be allocated to a deferred revenue account until the funds are utilized towards the projects outlined in the agreement.
So note, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All in favor? Motion is passed. There are no presentations, so we'll go straight into the public meeting, point two. Public Meeting 223-8052, Ontario Limited, Caitlin Corporation, Loyalist Estates, Phase 14 Draft Plan of Subdivision, D12-014, and Zoning By-Law Amendment, D14-009, 2024. A public meeting is being held in accordance with the provisions of Section 3412 and 5120 of the Planning Act to consider a zoning bylaw amendment and a draft plan of subdivision. The subject lands are legally described as Part Lots 9 and 10, Concession 1, as in Part 3 on Plan 29R 7458, and Part 1 on Plan 29R 8210, former village of Bath, now Loyalist Township in the county of Lennox and Annington. The proposed subdivision will have 48 single detached dwellings with direct access to a new 20-meter municipal ring road. The new road will be accessible via Country Club Drive in the village of Bath. The proposed zoning bylaw amendment will rezone the subject lands from open space to residential type 2, exception 15, holding zone; residential type 3, exception 23, holding zone; and residential type 3, exception 24, holding zone, to facilitate the development of the proposed subdivision. Council will hear in person or by their counsel, solicitor, or agent, any person who claims to be affected by these applications. And just for the people in attendance, staff are here to provide some information and answer questions from council. Then the proponent has a presentation, and they will be virtual. Then we will be opening it up in chambers to anyone that wishes to speak to this item. And then we will be going to the virtual audience if there's anyone there that wishes to speak to it as well. So that's the process that we'll follow through on this item. Okay? So at this time, I'll turn it over to staff.
Through you, your worship. I'll give you a quick overview of the proposed applications. So Caitlin Corporation has submitted these applications for the proposed subdivision, which is identified as Phase 14 within the overall development plan for the planned subdivisions in the northern portion of the Loyalist Estates located in the village of Bath. These applications have been submitted to facilitate the development of the 48 single detached residential lots, a 20-meter wide municipal right-of-way, and a small block intended for a servicing easement. The proposed zoning bylaw amendment application will rezone the subject lands from open space to residential zones with a holding symbol to facilitate the development of the proposed single detached dwellings. Statutory public meeting is being held to obtain input from public. Recommendation report will be brought once the technical review is completed, and comments have been addressed from agencies, staff, and the public. The applicant's consultant is present virtually and will be providing a quick presentation on the development proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I don't imagine there are any, but are there any questions for staff at this time? If none, we will be bringing our presenters into the meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. It's Angela Scavaris. I'm a partner at Macaulay Show Mehausen. We are the planners for the applicant. Good evening to council, staff, and members of the public. The purpose of the meeting tonight, as has been stated, is to provide an overview of the proposed residential development for Phase 14 of the Loyalist Country Club Estates development. And I'm just going to share the presentation. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
So the subject site, as stated, is Phase 14. It's comprised of approximately 3.86 hectares and is located on the south side of what will ultimately be the north leg of Country Club Drive, west of County Road 7 or Church Street, and it's outlined in red. You can see generally the outline of Country Club Drive, which will extend north. It exists on the east and west side, and it will connect across the top. So I thought this would be actually a good time to provide everyone with an outline of the master phasing plan. I know this development has been going on for some time, and we're at Phase 14, and there's quite a lot going on. So this slide just simply shows the overall development of the Country Club Estates. The pink sites represent active applications, including Phase 14 that are currently with the township. The gray represents existing or under construction parts of the community. And the orange are approved but pre-construction, so they're approved, but they're not yet ready to move forward. And I also wanted to briefly, due to its proximity to Phase 14, I just wanted to take a moment to mention the clubhouse site, which is one of the pink sites in the middle here. It's, zoning amendment and site plan applications have been submitted and are currently under consideration by the township for the clubhouse site. The application includes the rounding out of the clubhouse lands and to allow for the expansion of the existing facility in order to provide for more enhanced services to the club members and the community. The existing parking lot is intended to be expanded to the north, which on this diagram is to the left, south of Phase 14, and will include appropriate buffers and landscaping. And separate statutory public meetings will be held for the clubhouse as well as the other pink sites over the next few months. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention because it does impact Phase 14. Just in terms of area context, where the site is in terms of the larger Bath community. In our project time- In our project timeline, we are at the statutory public meeting stage. And as Avanash had indicated after tonight's meeting, we've, once we've received any comments in addition to the technical comments received from staff and commenting agencies, those will all be taken into account. Appropriate revisions and updates to documentation will be made and resubmitted back to the township for further circulation and review. And then ultimately, a staff recommendation report will be brought forward to council. The subject site is designated as low-density residential. It permits singles, semis, duplexes with a maximum density of 31 units per hectare. The application is proposing 48 single detached dwellings, and the density works out to 12.43 units per hectare, so well within the permitted maximum, and proposes the lowest built form. The existing zoning, as Avanash had noted, is open space, which needs to be rezoned in order to permit the residential uses. This is a copy of the draft plan of subdivision that's been submitted to the town, to the township. You can see there's an allowance here off of Country Club Drive. It's a 20-meter public right-of-way. It creates a ring road. The lots in pink are 11 meters or 36 feet. The ones in blue are intended to be 13.4 meters or 44-foot frontages. And the yellow lots are proposed to be 16.8 meter or 55-foot frontages. And in the southeast corner over here is a sanitary servicing easement that will run through the golf course and connect over to the east leg of Country Club Drive into Phase Six of the community. So the proposed zoning, there's three different zone categories. These are zone categories that currently exist within the development, specifically Phases 11, 12, and 13. So we're not, we're not asking for any modifications to those zoning provisions. They've already been reviewed and approved within the community by the municipality, and we're intending to replicate those. That's just a summary of the zone provisions. Provides minimum lot frontages, all the building setback requirements, height, coverage, and accessory building coverage. So those will all be applied to the site. And then in terms of built form examples, these are the house designs in the built form that will be proposed for this, for this area. They are the same house designs that are anticipated for Phase 11, which is the Royal Oak Crescent area, has not been built out yet, but I believe that's the next one up in terms of construction, and it will have this, this type of built form. So in terms of background studies, quite a number of studies as required as part of the submission package to the township, county, and commenting agencies. Quite a number of reports have to be completed. And most of these reports have been done as part of the larger community, the initial or earlier phases. But as each phase comes forward, the appropriate reports all get updated to reflect that particular phase to ensure that services can, are still available and that everything is, is working the way that it's supposed to. So these are all the, the reports that have been updated and submitted. So just some, some key items, highlights. Again, proposing 48 single detached lots on a 20-meter municipal road. It will include sidewalks that connect to Country Club Drive. The development is consistent and in conformity with provincial legislation and policy initiatives. It conforms to county and the township official plans. The zoning amendment is to rezone to the similar zone categories as in Phases 11, 12, and 13. And the technical studies support the proposed development. So in terms of next steps, as I said, we need to receive the balance of any outstanding circulation comments. Together with any comments we receive this evening, we will revise the plans and reports as necessary to address any remaining technical comments and resubmit for additional review. And then eventually, staff will bring a recommendation report to council. And I just, just maybe if I can, before council opens up the floor for questions, I'd like to mention that we did receive comments from one resident regarding a number of items, construction traffic, school buses, and safety of children playing in the area. The person had also indicated that they felt it was no longer an adult lifestyle community. And just for clarification, in Ontario, we are not legally allowed to restrict housing for adult lifestyle. Development can be designed to cater to a certain age group, but families with children cannot technically be restricted. So I just wanted to, to make that clear. And notice that, sorry, Caitlin has noticed that there has been an increase in families with children interested in their, in their product as the homes are outside of the GTA and tend to be a little bit more affordable. Safety, however, is a very valid point, and especially as it relates to construction traffic. That is definitely an issue to be dealt with. And Caitlin has advised that they will be looking into a separate construction access that will avoid construction vehicles traveling through the community. With respect to Country Club Drive, as I had shown at the very beginning, the loop of Country Club Drive doesn't connect yet. We have an east leg and a west leg, and they are hoping to have that completed within 2026 so that it will be a, a complete road system, rain road system there. So that's it for my presentation. Thank you very much, and I am happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the presenter at this time? Seeing none, there's no questions being presented. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Now, we, we will go to the public portion. And this, as was mentioned a couple of times already, the purpose of this is so that we can receive comments and input, and it will all be taken back when the final reviews are being done. So we do have a number that signed up on the way in here. I'll call out the names. If you do wish to speak to council, then please come forward to one of the mics. You just push the button until the red light comes on and then provide us with your information. The first was Grant Lindsay. Oh, the deputy's coming down. He'll make sure that. There we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, for this opportunity to address council on this application. I'm going to confine my comments to overall planning objectives for this entire community. And what I'm going to speak to specifically is when you are considering the approval of this particular phase of this subdivision, please keep in mind the entire community as a whole. And as we heard from the developer's planning consultant, yes, you cannot call it a adult lifestyle community any longer. That is not proper with respect to planning legislation in Ontario. And as a result, you can perhaps, and as this particular developer has done over the years, you can market your product a certain way. You can build a certain type of product, primarily bungalows that appeal to a certain demographic, but you cannot restrict by age. And I think that's understood by virtually everybody in this room. However, what we have noticed over the last, I would say, since I've come to this community about four years ago now, is that the developer has changed their product type in a sense of moving away from bungalow type of housing, although I noticed on the drawing there that one is being shown as a potential unit to be purchased. But primarily, the shift has taken place with Phase Eight. And from what I can see of the Royal Oak Phase is that the shift has taken place to a two-story. I'm going to call it primarily for families to live in. Not entirely, again, you can't say unequivocally one or the other, but the product type has changed now to accommodate people with children. So what I want this council to consider in this particular application, maybe it will not be appropriate in this particular phase. But I understand that other phases have not received final registration yet, so plans can still be changed. And what I would like to indicate is that with the shift in the type of housing geared more towards families and families with children, there is a distinct lack of parkland for these children. There's only one existing site in this entire community that's down near Main Street off King's Court. That's the only active parkland space where there's a swing set where you can take your child. Holy court, sorry. And so when you look at the subsequent phases going ahead, including this one, you see the arrangement for the dwelling units, but you don't even see an ability to have what I've known in the past and when I used to design subdivisions for tot lots, one lot set aside to have a small-scale park structure so a mother with their child could walk to the site and have their child play in that particular location instead of having to go all the way down Country Club, about a distance of about a half a kilometer to get to the nearest swing set. Now, you may wonder, what's this person talking about here with the lack of green space and lack of open space? That's not what I'm talking about. Open space in this particular development is private open space. It is the golf course. It is a golf course facility which you have to join, and it is not a public facility. So again, taking the mother that wants to take their child to a swing set, they have to traverse at least half a kilometer down Country Club in order to do so. As these subdivision phases get approved around Country Club Drive, it's going to be even a further walk. The only other alternative is to go out onto County Road Seven, walk where there's no sidewalk, down to the township lands, which again is about maybe quarter, half a kilometer walk. So I think in the interest of good planning, council should consider perhaps requesting from this phase or any of the previous phases, lands to be set aside as a public park facility so that people who purchase these lots in two-story dwellings will be able to have a place to take their children and not, again, not go on the golf course because the golf course is, you cannot access that land. It is private. It's considered trespassing if you walk on it. And again, there was a, a couple of children that were shooed off by the security guard about two weeks ago. They didn't know that they couldn't walk on the golf course lands. So, Mr. Mayor, I think from respect of good planning, from the overall community perspective, this council needs to consider having land set aside for an active park. Those are my submissions.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for the presentation. There was one note that I missed mentioning before we started the open, the public session is typically, we have a three-minute timeframe just to try and keep the meeting moving along. So there will be a timer that comes up. I forgot to mention it, so I never held to the three minutes. That was my error. So just going forward, we'll just try to stay close to the three minutes so that we can get through and make sure everyone has an opportunity. The next on the list is Jeremy Horworth. Yeah, if you can just push the button so it lights up, then there we are.
Mr. Chairman and fellow councillors, Deputy Mayor. I moved into the community about four years ago, four years ago today, actually. And when we first moved in, expectations were, of course, that it was to be set out as a community that catered to retirees. But we fully understand, as has been mentioned, that times change. But what I've noticed is it seems that Caitlin, just Caitlin Corporation, all they want to do is put more homes in and reduce the, the, for instance, this, the Phase 14 is where the driving range is. Okay? So the Loyalist Golf Course does have, from time to time, some OGA events or whatever, which is good, you know, brings in business to the community and so on, helps Caitlin out. And I, it's my understanding that there should be a driving range provided to expect that type of ongoing tournaments and so on. So has anything been thought of from Caitlin of where they are going to put this driving range? Or are they going to put a driving range in once they eliminate the driving range for Phase 14? And secondly, in agreement with Grant, it seems that no money is put aside by the developer for any recreation. It's my understanding that a developer has to put a certain amount of funds aside to provide parks or something. I've never seen that from Caitlin. You know, and, and I guess my question is, is that being enforced? So basically, just consideration, asking your consideration on this motion and so on to take some of these things into into consideration. And maybe other options can be found. Maybe they can build 48 houses on the land across from Church Street. They own that land, I believe, over there. It could still be incorporated in the golf course. They could leave the driving range where it is, you know? Thank you for your time.
And the next one up is Louise Sweet. We've already got it live for you, so you're good to go.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for this opportunity to, just just a couple of comments. I guess it is, with respect to, and the consultant did mention it, and that was with respect to the construction traffic that is currently happening up and down Country Club Drive. And I know Caitlin is aware of it, and, and it's something that's a major concern for the number of people on Country Club having to live with the, the amount of construction traffic. So yes, it will be looked at, I'm sure, as development goes along with Phases 12 in particular, as you continue up north, Country Club. And it comes around to meet Loyalist, if you're familiar. But the, what we're concerned about is the timing. And at what point is it going to be required upon Caitlin to complete that road over to Loyalist before there's any more, perhaps, building permit issued? Is there a way, either through the condition of approval? Is there a way, either through the condition of approval, that prior to receiving any building permits for Phase 14, that that road be completed over to Loyalist? So there's that better option, and it's a shorter haul route for construction traffic and affecting far less people. And even if it could be done through the preservating agreements for Phase 12, which I understand are very close, and they will be starting construction then on Phase 12, if the condition could be there that even with Phase 12, only a certain number of permits are awarded before that road is completed. So that is a major concern of our community, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next is Kathy and Sid Dick.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak to Mr. Mayor and council. I guess, I guess my principal concern here is, as Grant mentioned, the change in the, and Jeremy mentioned it as well, the change in the nature of the development. Now, it may not be allowed to market as an adult lifestyle community, but certainly, if you look at Caitlin's advertising marquees at the entrance to the project, they're called Lifestyle Developments, and they picture mature individuals having a great deal of fun. They also, when I bought seven years ago, showed us a golf course that had a driving range and all the other amenities that go with a golf course. And it's my understanding that the driving range now is to be relocated. And that changes the project that I was presented and the representation that was made to me when I bought my unit. It was represented at that time that where the housing has gone down in whatever phase it is, on the entrance, just off the entrance of Country Club from Highway 33, that there was to be a seniors facility, though it hadn't been approved, but it was represented that it would be there. They're representing things to people to buy, and they're not living up to what they're saying, they're changing to maximize their opportunities. And I think that, I don't know what happened if there were parkland dedications required, and if they were, where they went, or if Caitlin was given the option of cash in lieu, and whether those went into general revenues or what was done with those, it would be really interesting to know that. It would be interesting to know, the planning consultant showed three pieces of the plan that were marked in pink, one of which is the subject properties. I don't understand what those represented, she didn't tell us what those represented. One of them is a clubhouse property. Can we have access to that information? A third issue that comes to me is that, just lost my train of thought. And my three minutes is ticking away. Am I able to come back and speak to you when I recall that?
Technically, no.
No. That's not what I asked.
I try to stay as close to the rules as I can, so at this point.
The other thing that, okay, it comes to me. The notice of this meeting, well, first of all, the notice of the application was dated March the 5th. Well, I know darn well, I didn't see that anywhere near March the 5th. It came along probably 45 days ago at the latest, at the longest. This meeting, the notice of meeting, I didn't receive until it was sent in a copy from one of the people who's here tonight. It wasn't, to my knowledge, delivered to me, otherwise I wouldn't even be here. At the time, it was dated the 2nd of June. Now, that's, 21 days is a reasonable amount of time, but you have to take into account the community that we're talking about. They're active, they're awake, there are 400 ducks in that community, and you know how long it takes to get 400 ducks in a row? I have no idea what the general consensus is in the community, and I don't think we've been given enough time to muster any notion of how people feel about this.
And you're just following up, so.
Okay.
If you could just wrap it up, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Thank you for your.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, by the way, I primarily raised questions, how do we get answers to those questions?
We're taking all the questions down and all the statements, and we're receiving everything tonight, and then the report will come back with all of the answers in it.
Yes, and they'll be, what, submitted in minutes or?
Yes, there'll be a part of a report that comes back to council, and they can, you can sign up to be able to receive those electronically if you wish, so you're notified immediately.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. And Nancy Trudell?
It won't be long because I don't have much to add because I agree with everything that's been said. My concern, I was at the meeting at the fire hall about a month ago, so my biggest concern, I'm at the corner of Green Haven and Country Club, which is where all the construction traffic goes by. My biggest concern is the speed of the vehicles, and I asked you about that. I even stopped in here about a week ago because nobody's gotten back to me as how they're addressing this problem. So speed is a big concern with the construction vehicles, the tradesmen, even some homeowners past my house, because now that there's children in the area, it's dangerous, it's way too fast.
Okay.
So how would you address that, the speed, like what could you do?
And we are, you've got your phone number here on this document, so that's the best way to be able to reach you?
Yes.
Correct?
But like I said, somebody was supposed to get back to me from here, and they haven't.
Okay, we will follow up on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, and just with the lady that was on there that said the completion of Country Club is supposed to be done by 2026, is that going to be a guarantee? Is that for sure, or could it be?
Typically, that's a part of the agreements that are done throughout this process. So again, when the report comes back to council, that will all be laid out in that report of like timelines and agreements and things like that typically are all in that.
And do you know how long that process would be to complete that?
No, because part of the process is tonight, all of this information is going to go back, and it's all going to be reviewed and taken care of, along with, as I mentioned, there's still some documents to come in from other agencies that are reviewing. So once that's all pulled together, then the final report will come, and I just, I don't know that date at this time, but.
Okay, at least we have a date now, though.
Yes, and we'll be coming back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. And the final one on the list is P. Cuthbert.
Evening, welcome. I signed this, thinking I'd just sign up for the being present.
Okay, if you don't have anything to share, that's fine, but.
I do, I think.
Wants to make sure everyone's got an opportunity.
I have an opportunity, and I'd like to concur with everyone that just spoke. I just moved into your community, okay, into Bath, having been out of Kingston for 57 years, okay, and moved in in April a year ago. And I'm in 10, Phase 10. So I see all the construction coming up, Country Club, that makes it into 10 and then carries on into 11, 12, and 13. With all due respect, the traffic is disgusting. I'm a police officer, a retired police officer for 48 years. The improper vehicles that are coming up, the construction vehicles that are coming up, construction vehicles coming from other sites all the way up Country Club into this site and then going back, which I don't think that is appropriate. If you have a site and you're working on that construction, you should have your own equipment in that site. But it's coming from way on the other side of the plaza coming in, that the, all the contractors are coming in, sit on my doorstep at 7:30 in the morning, 7 o'clock in the morning, you see every contractor coming in to Phases 11, 12, and 13. I was quite surprised to see a presentation, and it's not before me. Nice presentation, I could hardly see it on the screens, but why wasn't that distributed? And I thought, it's surprising, all that information, and I think that should be shared with people as well, and I would appreciate it if someone could send it to me so I can share it with other people, because here's what Caitlin is saying about this rezoning. The golf course, yes, that's recreational property, I concur with this gentleman, there's no parkland. You know what, I think there's three children in Phase 10, they just arrived, okay, I don't know, they walk up and down the street, they walk way to the other end in order to join the playground, or their parents have to drive them down there, and I feel sorry for them, can't go onto the golf course. So I mean, they either play in the streets where all this construction traffic is, someone's going to get hurt. I assure you, something's going to happen. But that's all my comments, but I'd appreciate if you could, we could get some type of enforcement of the construction company or construction equipment moving back and forth, okay? It'd be nice if someone eventually paves in front of us and parkland across, well, the boulevard across the street, it's going to be nice, it's a year now, it's going on 14, 15 months, somebody says trees are coming, I don't know when they are, sir, but I'd appreciate it if they could speed that up and finish Phase 10, or than to finish Phase 10 before they go on to 12, 13, and 14. And by the way, the houses that were shown on the screen, I hope and I pray that that's the style of home, because the seven homes that are in there now don't look like that. I promise you, okay, I'm looking at them every day. So I look forward to those homes being built, similar to the ones I have.
Okay.
Thank you, very appreciated. First time at this meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you for attending. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Saying none, we will go to our virtual audience, and for the people in the virtual audience, if you wish to speak on this item, please use the raised hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
With no hands raised, that completes the public meeting, and I would just ask staff to please come forward again. Share what additional information you have at this time, thank you.
Thank you, through the mayor, as Avanash outlined, we are here and we're listening to comments, but there are some general questions that were asked that we were able to answer tonight. The first being the existing parkland and parkland dedication, so in terms of this application, what is being proposed is cash in lieu of parkland, so the Planning Act requires 5% of land be dedicated for parkland. If 5% of the land isn't dedicated, then you get a cash in lieu payment. In terms of the existing parkland for Loyalist Estates, so Loyalist Estates is somewhat of a unique subdivision in that it was given draft approval in the 1990s from the province of Ontario without an expiration date, so it never expired, and at that time, they did provide parkland for the two phases that were the original phases, the north and the south, along County Road Seven or Church Street and Abidon. In terms of the access to documents, we'd be happy to send out any documents, we have the, all documents that were submitted as part of this Planning Act application are available to the public, and we'd be happy to provide them. In terms of the notice, I would note that the notice in March, that was not a notice for public meeting, under the Plan Act, 15 days after you deem an application complete, you have to provide public notice. So we provide notice to everyone within 120 meters that we've received this application, and that was just to notify, to give the heads up. And then in June, that was the notice of public meeting, and under the Plan Act, we were required 20 days, so we made the 20-day deadline, so we are well within the Plan Act requirements. And then lastly, just in terms of construction traffic, we understand and we hear that in terms of the haul routes, so for the existing haul routes are there for the existing developments, in terms of this development, ultimately, Phase 12, which is the connector from Country, one end of Country Club to the other end of Country Club, it needs to be completed because we need the water services to be looped to the other end of Country Club in order to service Phase 14. So ultimately, that would be completed before Phase 14 would continue, or at least the not fully completed, but a preservating agreement would be entered into in the services, and the road would be constructed. Yeah, I think that's the majority of it.
Okay, and you were mentioning information can be provided to them directly, what's the best way for them? I'm assuming email address, and who would be best to provide that to?
That's right, we have, so we have everyone's email addresses through the sign-in sheet, so Avanash or myself will send out all the relevant documents, or we won't provide every document, we'll start out with just the playing justification report and the zoning bylaw amendment, and if there's any other specific documents, so we don't bog them down with pages and pages of reading, we can find what they'd like.
Okay, now, everyone has their address and phone numbers, but there's no email addresses on this, do you want me to place it back on?
I'll speak with them afterwards.
Okay, thank you. So James is going to come, James is going to be available to take your email addresses so that they can provide all of the information that you were looking for, okay? Okay, yes, James will take care of that, yes, if you couldn't make it out this evening, he'll be available to have a discussion, great, as soon as we're done this portion, okay? Thank you. Okay, so that completes the public meeting portion. We do have a recommendation before, as council, would someone like to put a motion on the floor?
Oh, that's so big, I can read that. Recommendation that the report from the Development Services Division dated June 24, 2025, Republic Meeting 2238052, Ontario Limited, Caitlin Corporation, Loyalist Estates, Phase 14, Draft of Subdivision D12-012, and Zoning Bylaw Amendment DH14009-2024 be received, and that a recommendation to be brought forward to council once comments in the Township Department, agencies, and the public have been addressed.
So move? Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor, any comments from the mover?
Just my thanks to those who presented this evening very eloquently, and I think were able to articulate some consistent themes that I hope the developer is listening very closely to.
Thank you. Other members of council? I don't think I can say it any better than the deputy did, so I'm just going to call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed, thank you. So if you wish to just go out in the vestibule, James will take all your information and So now we're on to open forum, open forum, 15 minutes of the meeting has been set aside for open forum. An individual may address council regarding an item on the agenda, excluding matters under the statutory public meeting section on the same agenda. Each person has three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak can register in advance with the Clerk's Division or raise their hand if participating virtually, and we will be able to bring you into. And we will be able to bring you into the meeting. But we don't have anyone wishing to speak in chambers, so I would go to the virtual audience, if there's anyone wishing to speak to council this evening under the open forum, please use the raised hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Thank you. No delegation, so straight to items for consideration. Proposed surplus land disposal and acquisition, McDonald's Lane, Amherst Island. Welcome. Did you have anything additional to share this evening, or just here for questions?
Just questions.
Thank you. Um, so council, we do have a recommendation before us. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor so we can have a discussion? Counselor Willis?
I move that the report from the Clerk's Division, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, reposed surplus land disposal and acquisition, McDonald's Lane, Amherst Island be received. Two, that council declare the portion of the land described as part two, three, four, and five on Plan Twenty-Nine R one-one-four-nine-four, in attachment one is surplus to the municipal needs. And three, that council delegates authority to the mayor and CAO to execute all necessary documents to authorize the sale and acquisition of the lands as described in this report. And four, that any funds received from the sale of lands be transferred to the Industrial and Business Parks Reserve.
So moved? Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor? Any comments from the mover, questions for staff?
Just a comment that I'm glad this is moving forward. Uh, it's getting rid of a piece of land that has no use and giving us access to some land for drainage, which will be helpful to the entire village.
Thank you. Seconder, other members? Call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. And the budget schedule? Did you have anything to add to this, or just questions again?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to comment, in the report, it does state that the uh budget survey is to be released in June. Um, however, it has been postponed to the first week of July.
Okay. So we do have a motion before us, Counselor Prodig?
I would move that the report from the Clerk's Division dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, re Twenty-Twenty-Six Budget Schedule be received, and that a special committee, the whole meeting scheduled on that a special committee of the whole meeting be scheduled on November fourth, twenty twenty-five for consideration of the not capital needs plan, and that council approve amending the Twenty-Twenty-Five Council and Committee's schedule to a change to November seventeenth, November twentieth meetings to council meetings, and add a council budget meeting date on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved? Do we have a second? Counselor Willis? Any comments or questions from the mover? No. Seconder, other members of council? Being none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Yes. Okay. Lakeside Phase Eight, Stage Two, Blocks Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Twenty-six, and Twenty-seven on Plan Twenty-nine M dash seventy-five, and Lakeside Phase Three, Stages Five, Stage Five, Lots Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen on Plan Twenty-nine M thirty-six, Part Lot Control Request. Welcome.
Thank you.
Did you have anything additional to share this evening?
Through the mayor, no, we do not, just here for questions.
Okay. And as was noted at the beginning of the meeting, Counselor Prodig did declare a conflict of interest. He has left the meeting during the discussion and the decision. So we do have a recommendation before us, council, Deputy Mayor Townen?
I move that the report from the Development Services Division, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, re Lakeside Phase Eight, Stage Two, Blocks Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Twenty-six, and Twenty-seven on Plan Twenty-nine M dash seventy-five, and Lakeside Phase Three, Stage Five, Lots Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen, and Plan Twenty-nine M dash thirty-six, Part Lot Control Request be received. And two, that bylaw Twenty-Twenty-Five dash thirty-two, being a bylaw to lift part lot control requirements for Blocks Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Twenty-six, and Twenty-seven on Plan Twenty-nine M dash seventy-five, for the Lakeside Phase Eight, Stage Two, Plan of Subdivision, and Lots Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen on Plan Twenty-nine M dash thirty-six, for the Lakeside Phase Three, Stage Five, be enacted and passed.
So moved? Seconded by Counselor Budrick. Any comments or questions from the mover? Seconder, other members? Call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Would someone mind just letting Counselor Prodig know? Now we are to road allowance, land sale, road allowance between lot nineteen and twenty, Con Two, closed by LA one-six-two-five-nine-seven between Millhaven Road and CN Rail. Is there anything additional to share?
Uh, through the mayor, no, nothing. Further to share, just here for questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we do have a recommendation. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Counselor Ennis?
Thank you through the mayor. Uh, move that the report from the Development Services Division dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, re road allowance, land sale, road allowance between lot nineteen and twenty, concession two, closed by LA one-six-two-five-nine-seven between Millhaven Road and CN Rail be received. Two, that council declare surplus to the municipal need and dispose a portion of land described as road allowance between lot nineteen and twenty, concession two, closed by LA one-six-two-five-nine-seven between Millhaven Road and CN Rail. Loyalist, more specifically, shown as parts one to three on Plan Twenty-nine R dash one-one-four-nine-zero. Three, that the sale price be based on the approved appraisal. Four, that council delegates authority to the mayor and CAO to execute all necessary documents to authorize the land transfer. Five, that the land being transferred be merged with the purchaser's land. And six, that any proceeds after costs received from the sale of the lands be transferred to the Industrial and Business Parks Reserve.
So moved? So moved? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Townen. Any comments from the mover? Seconder, other members? Call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. And the next is the Independent Electricity System Operator Procurements and Municipal Support Resolutions. Counselor Ennis did declare this and is leaving the room for the discussion and the decision. Is there anything additional for this item?
No additional comment, just uh answering questions.
Thank you. So council, we have a motion for us or recommendation before us. Would someone like to put a motion? Counselor Prodig?
Thank you, worship. I would move that the report from the Development Services Division dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, re Independent Electric Electricity System Operator Procurements and Municipal Support Resolutions be received, and that council require proponents of the IESO Energy Project seeking a municipal support resolution as part of an IESO's energy procurement procurement or program to undertake the engagement plan outlined in this report prior to requesting a municipal support resolution from council.
So moved? Seconded by Counselor Budrick. Any comments from the mover?
Very briefly, worship, uh, it's good to get ahead of this. I know in previous situations, we, I don't want to say we were behind, but we we found a better way to deal with such a such a request, and thanks to all those who put it together.
Thank you. Seconder, any comments, other members of council? I just too would like to thank staff for bringing this forward, and when I read it, I thought it accurately captured all of the input that was provided, so I think it's a good document, and I think we're set for success now going forward at this time. With the interest that's being shown, I think this, we're we're well established now, ready to go. Thank you. So with that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. We'll just give a second, get all these back in the room. So there's no committee of the whole this evening, so notice of motion. Are there any notices of motion to be presented this evening? Saying none? Are there any direct motions to be presented this evening? Saying none? Consent agenda? Consent agenda just has items of similarity and routine lumped together. Does anyone wish to extract an item from the consent agenda this evening? Saying none? I would entertain a motion or to capture both, all of the items. Counselor Budrick?
Recommendation that all the items in the consent agenda dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five be approved and presented, and that the necessary actions be taken.
So moved? Seconded by Counselor Ennis. Any comments from the mover? Seconder, any other member? Call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Announcements? Are there any announcements this evening? Counselor Prodig?
I'll be brief, and I won't name them all, but uh congratulations to all the graduates of Our Lady of Mount Carmel, Bath Public School, Odessa Public School, Ernest Town Secondary School, Holy Cross, Saint Lawrence, Queens, and any other school that any of our residents have gone to. Just congratulate them, and to the teachers, enjoy your summer, you deserve it.
Especially the teachers. Any other announce?
Oh, oh, I'm in trouble.
Yeah.
Amherst Island Public School, my apologies, please forgive me.
You got elbow, didn't you? Other announcements this evening? Counselor Willis?
I have a couple I would like to uh congratulate the Bath Seniors Hospitality Club, who celebrated their fiftieth anniversary. Um, and I was uh privileged to represent council at their luncheon, which was the best lunch I've had in a long time. And uh, so I'm happy to attend any future events for them. And congratulate the Amherst Island Agriculture Society, who uh through support from the Community Grant Program have built a pavilion uh that's to be used for future events, and they had a very uh well-attended opening for the pavilion, it's beautifully built, and last Saturday was the first market that they hosted there.
Thank you. It's an amazing pavilion. It's quite a structure, very nice. Any other announcements? Saying none? I would take a motion for the confirmatory bylaw. Deputy Mayor?
I move that bylaw Twenty-Twenty-Five dash forty-four, to confirm the proceedings of the Council of Loyalist Township be enacted and passed, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign and seal.
So moved? Seconded by Counselor Ennis. Call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. And a motion to adjourn. Counselor Willis?
I move to adjourn at seven oh four PM.
So moved? Seconded by Counselor Prodig? All in favor?